Now.
We were talking about that the other day.
There was another sheriff we had a.
Okay, we are live. We're gonna go ahead and call a meeting to order. It is Tuesday, June 18th, 2024. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One and all. Okay. Do you have any minutes or reports received and filed?
Yes, the collective.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports upcoming meetings and events.
All righty, Cole County Communities Annual Summer Picnic at Towson countryside Park tonight. Thursday, I've got a board of the military strategic planning meeting. Saturday's for each foundation of Cole County barbecue, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Shilby's. And then also the People Helping Paul's Dog Rescue Cornhole Tournament Saturday at Apple Creek. And it's to support their foster organization. Kind of slow the rest of this week, which is good, but it's gonna be hot. I think that's it.
In addition to that, tomorrow is St. Mary's Ice Cream Event.
Ice cream.
And it's a holiday, right?
It is a holiday, yes.
And Thursday, I have United Way Emergency Food and Shelter Program meeting. That's it.
Okay. Yeah, I've got the picnic, so the ice cream social. We have a United Way, our Cole County Classic Golf Tournament meeting Thursday. And then that evening, I've got a meeting of our 250th committee. Friday, I will be out. I've got a conference out at the X-Cup Center. I'm the host of course, so I'll be out there locked behind everything. Saturday, Sons of the Union Veterans. And then Monday is the Sheriff's Golf Tournament, right?
Yes, sir.
I bet, okay. That is all. Okay, any commission comments? Bids and contracts. Approval and signing of the sole source farm with Davis Creative Painting.
This is just approval and signing of the sole source farm with Davis Creative Painting. This ad has already ran in the paper. The total project is $41,140.
So this is just the form, this not their contract for the work?
No, it's not a contract, just the form.
Okay. So I make a motion to approve and sign the sole source form with Davis Creative Painting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval and signing of the EAP Employer Assistance Program Agreement with the University of Missouri.
This is a new agreement with the university. It virtually mimics what we had in place with Capital Region. The price is within $3 of what we've been paying historically for the last several years. But with the merger, then MU wanted a contract that's just them. We did sign an addendum in January that this is an actual new contract, and Jill has reviewed it.
Okay. You make a motion to approve and sign the EAP Employee Assistance Program Agreement with University of Missouri.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Unfinished business. Discussion and approval of quote from Meyer Electric for the installation of network ladders, ladder trays, and extending the fiber cable.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
So, so we've had this on the agenda for the past few weeks. So there were some questions as far as the type of work that's gonna be performed. And then also make sure we had it on the right documentation and things like that. So I emailed it and discussed it with everyone. But this is a quote from Meyer Electric to install ladder trays and extend fiber cabling from the data room that's located off of booking down into the new data center. This will be at a cost of $10,750. And then there is a detailed description as far as the type of work that will be done within the quote. So I would ask that this would be approved. And I welcome any questions that you might have. This is a precursor to putting in the new electronic security package. And also to start outfitting that room to hold servers and things like that. And all that requires infrastructure built into that data room, and this goes towards that.
So we went on a little field trip this morning, Brian and I, to look at these ladders. Because I envisioned little chrome things that can get fairly cheap. But it's to hold a whole lot of cables and stuff, we looked at some different things. Then we kind of looked at the overall project too, where we're gonna end up with it. Because there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done to update things that's coming down the road. And this is just like a one bite out of that elephant. And then the sheriff also shared with me this morning too, that this is within the budget of building that room out, that IT room out. So that's good news. I don't know why you didn't tell me that, Brian.
It's just the.
He let the sheriff do it. I know you're a nice guy, so. I'm okay with us had questions about it before. It seemed like we were having costs just keep coming in and stuff. But Brian took me over there. We didn't have any witnesses, and he beat me to the pole and made me agree to it, so.
And there's also Meyer Electric is on contract, is there a great?
Yeah. No, it is a good, good explanation of it all, Brian. Appreciate your time this morning. I'm explaining that to me in layman's terms later, so.
So we, we, we had a budget of somewhere around 400,000 plus for this. And even after the, the additional 10,750 for Meyer, we're still, we're still under budget by maybe 60,000, 70,000?
Right. So what I do is I get budgetary quotes for this stuff just to give everyone a kind of an idea of what we're looking at. So this isn't that figure that you just referenced. I believe we'll come in under that. But this is actually part of that.
Right.
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good with it. I'll make a motion to approve the quote from Meyer Electric for installation of network ladder trays and extending fiber cabling at a price of 10,750.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks again, Sheriff, if you'd mind.
Thank you, sir. Okay, new business. Accounts payable review.
We would ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, discussion of nurse practitioners.
Good morning.
Morning, morning.
Hello.
I'll try to keep this brief. I know we've been having ongoing discussions for a while, but I do have some notes that I want to share. As you know, right now, we currently have an epidemiology for laboratory capacity enhancing detection expansion contract. The deliverables for that are to, the contractor shall use funds to assist in providing for implementing any of the following activities for COVID-19 response. Case investigations and contact tracing. Public health surveillance, which includes data reporting, analysis, and visualization. COVID-19 testing. Health education, information that promotes the reduction of community spread. And professional development are activities aimed at building infection prevention and control and outbreak response expertise. So our goal is to meet the specific contract deliverables while using the funding to improve health and prevent illness with a positive impact on our community and county staff. So with the recent rise in cost of urgent care visits and limited availability of appointments at physician offices, for some time, we've talked about adding a nurse practitioner at the health department. That person would provide quick care services to county staff and their families and perhaps others at a discounted rate, but also provide a separate menu of services to the entire community. I've provided you with a list of the services that we could offer. The quick care clinic would not replace staff going to their regular doctor, but would give them another option when needed. We went and built insurance, so our county funded plan would hopefully see a savings. You know, being unsure of staff usage, we did a survey. About 73% either strongly agreed or agreed that they were likely to use the nurse practitioner services. The biggest negative comment we had was the hour of time that staff would be allowed to visit the clinic before they had used sick leave. It was not our intent to create an unfair benefit. It can be removed from the proposal, but I do want to share our reasons. We thought it would encourage staff to use the clinic. And also, we thought it might give them a reason to come to the clinic if they're alone on leave. You know, instead of not showing up for the entire day or maybe staying at work sick, they could pop over, see the nurse practitioner, get some medication and feel better. Otherwise, they might have to wait until after work and go to urgent care or an emergency department. But of course, you know, that can be, be removed. Another commenter said it was cheaper to use their own physician, and it might depend, dependent on your insurance plan. If you have a high deductible plan, it's going to be more expensive to use our urgent care. We have a staff member that said I could use her example. She went to urgent care, thought she had strep throat. Our insurance discount was $18 for that urgent care visit for a strep throat test. She paid $631 out of pocket. That's a lot of money for a sick visit and a strep test. So we were trying to, to help those employees with that cost. So it really depends which plan you have and how much you pay. Also, in a recent meeting with MU Healthcare and CAP Region after their merger, they suggested their progression of care is quick care, physician, then urgent care, then ED. So they're really emphasizing the quick care type clinics. They have one here in town. This would just be another option for staff. And of course, like I said, there would be a menu of services we'd offer to the public like we do now. Lab draws, STD testing, family planning, biometrics, sports physicals, work physicals. We would of course charge a nominal fee for all those visits to help offset the cost. But this first year, we would use the ELC funding. It would be no cost to the county. We did meet with our insurance provider about liability costs. They thought it'd be a base cost of $2,500 a year. But we would have to fill out the library of services along with the medical professionals qualifications to determine the exact cost. But of course, the ELC contract would cover that this first year. So, you know, if approved, we'd attempt to hire a nurse practitioner in the health department with no cost to the county until this contract runs out, which is June 30th of 2025. I'm not sure we could provide, get a provider to agree to that. We would sure try. And we know that there are a lot of services that staff could use now that they might not know about. So I'd encourage them to look at the health department's website. Or if they have something they need to call the health department and ask if we can provide that service at a lower cost than what they're getting it now at one of the other healthcare providers in town. Do you have any questions?
I think it was a test for one year. And, you know, basically, if it, you know, if it turns out to be really, really utilized by our employees, then we can, we can look at extending it and making it a permanent program. But if not, you know, if we're not, we're not out anything for this, this one, the first year. So to me, I'm in favor, but I think this is, this is a good benefit.
You mentioned there, there's one, only one place for quick care.
One CAP region place for quick care at Hy-Vee. Now, JCMG has an express care. I would, I guess St. Mary's says, I don't know. But I would just happen to attend that MU Healthcare CAP Region meeting the other day. And the progression of care was a big discussion. So I thought I'd bring up that that's their suggestion, and there is one quick care in town for them.
So we would call this a quick care?
Correct.
Operation? I think you are overly optimistic on the revenue production of this employee. You've got that person seeing four people an hour, 35 hours a week, 48 weeks a year, and 100% collection rate. Because you don't have any discount in there for people that didn't pay, right?
Correct.
And I think that's impossible. That person, that first year they work here for us, they're gonna get, what's the number?
39.
39 days off, paid for vacation, sick leave, holidays. You've got nothing built in there to, to absorb when the power went off out there, when this, when there was a snow day. You know, you got them people making 100% of their potential on a day that we're snowed in and nobody showed up. So you, you've got to really build in. There's no professional that I know of can, can collect 100%, 100% of the time. That they, that's potential. Nobody bats a thousand is what I guess I'm saying. If we didn't use this money for this approach, what, what else could that be money be used for? That's, you went through a list there.
We'll probably have to look at some more professional developments for our staff. We'll have to reevaluate each of their hours and see if we can build more to it. You know, right now, the nurses bill to the FIG grant or the FIG contract, MCH contract, CCHC contract. We'll have to dive down and look at each of their hours and see if we can build more hours to this contract. If they're doing CD investigations, perhaps some more health education. But it's very limited what we can spend this money on.
Okay, so we, we, do we have a base number that we already spend on this, those professional developments? So we have to prove that we're doing more than that? Or can we use the base that we're paying every year to come out of this?
We can use the base that we're paying every year.
Okay.
But I mean, truthfully, our nurses don't go to a lot of conferences. Because we don't have a lot of meeting travels and dues money built into our budget.
Okay.
And three of us have signed up to do the NACO Conference virtually because it's in Detroit this year. And because we're short staff, we can't send a couple of staff to Detroit for a week. So we're gonna do it virtually so we can do it as we have time allows. And that money's already coming out of this contract.
The paperwork time that's built into that person that sees four people an hour.
Charting.
Charting, which, you know, when I talk to medical professionals now, one of their biggest headaches is, you know, keeping the charts up to date and keeping that rolling. I question whether or not.
We built it, you question.
Five hours a week. Sorry.
You question whether or not we built in enough.
Right.
Charting time.
Yeah, I do. So I, I'm not saying no, but I'm saying, wait, you're too optimistic on the revenue side. And I don't know if we know the territory, like if we knew an insider whistle, I shouldn't call him whistleblower. An insider who's been in this practice, this kind of practice. What, what's the efficiency rate of a normal person who, who, who works in this industry? This, it can't be as high as we're projecting.
So we did visit with a company that has their own nurse practitioner. They've got separate areas of their buildings that they designated for that. They've got three, four offices in there and stuff. And I mean, they're, they were very highly spoken of it in that it helps keep people in there. Where comp injuries go through them. It seemed like there were a lot of benefits. And the, the reason I'm probably more for it than anything is because our health department is really willing to take it on. We didn't really push when we threw the idea out there. And I didn't know if they'd be willing to accept this and add this to their headaches out there. But I think that's kind of set me on it. The numbers are, you know, pretty positive and maybe aggressive. But I just feel like trying for one year. We have this ELC funding. I think it's worth a try. Sam has talked to the city about possibly working with their employees. And I don't know how much you want to run with it or if you want to start taking baby steps, how you want to do it.
It'll take a little time just to get the person on board, find out what they're comfortable with, finalize the collaborative practice agreement with Dr. Kaywood, get our processes in order. I think Jen and Dana and I talked about, you know.
I think it'd be a fact, it was a benefit to our employees. I just, I would use it.
You mentioned the public using it.
Right.
So I mean, do you have any projections of, of the, of the usage? How much of it's our own? Maybe how much of it could be the city? How much of it is Cole County?
We would definitely want to leave appointments for our staff. And then I'm not sure how much of the city usage. But I know that we have a nurse practitioner that comes in twice a month now that does the family cleaning visits. And some people can't come on the Wednesday that she's there. So we would open that up all the time. So I'd imagine that our usage would increase for that. We get a lot of calls for sports physicals, and we don't have anybody that will do that right now. Our biometrics, you know, we go and visit some of the businesses in town, but people could come in and use those lab draws. So, you know, it's hard to predict. I know we get a lot of calls asking for services that we don't have the staff to provide right now. But it's hard to project how much usage we have. I guess that's the beauty of having the funding for the first years. We can explore and, and see how much usage is on. Dana or Jen have any ideas?
We have quite a large number of clients that come in that need same-day STI testing and treatment. Right now, we can't provide the treatment until we have test results back, which takes a couple of days. If we have that nurse practitioner there, those clients don't have to go to ER urgent care to have that service that day. We can provide that as well. So that is a, a pretty big community benefit. Like we, we have a pretty high population, but clients need that service, so.
Yeah, right now, our nurse practitioner does not see males for that service. And all you have to do is look at the rising rates of STDs in our area to know that it's in need.
Right.
Syphilis is higher now than it's been probably in a decade or two.
The economy that, that we visited that started out with like a quick care, they've actually had a physician now that comes in two days a week. Because, you know, they added to it, you know, it was so successful. I'm not saying we're gonna, we're gonna bring in a physician or anything like that. But, but it, it, it is utilized by their employees because it's, it's, you know, quick. And you can go see the nurse practitioner, checked out, get a prescription, and you're out of there fairly quickly. So I think the, the fact that, that there is no cost to the county, I would like to see, let's see us try it for a year, this year. And, you know, it could be, yeah, it just, it bombs big time. But from the survey, I'd almost say I think our employees, if they can, you know, get in very quickly, and if we add their families as well, that's one heck of a benefit.
How much support staff is this nurse practitioner gonna need?
We already have staff at the front desk that check in all the patients. They would room their own patients, so we would absorb the workload within the current staff.
Okay. And then if, at the end of the first year trial, if it's not successful enough to continue, what are we doing with the nurse practitioner? Are we absorbing her into the health department budget and keeping that person? Are we letting them go?
That would definitely be the commission's decision. But I think that the feeling is this is a one-year trial. If it doesn't work, then that physician, that person would not have.
That's what we're actually be ready for, is to cut the cord and be upfront with them. And I know this is a one-year contractor until June 30th of next year. And if it doesn't work, it just doesn't work.
Because that's gonna limit people's attractiveness too.
Yeah, I don't know if we'll find somebody that will take it from here.
That could be, that could be, we could be dead in the water if we can't find a nurse practitioner. So, but at least.
We'll try.
Yeah.
I would like to see refined or recalculated revenue numbers based upon some better allowance for not being 100% efficient all the time and collecting every dollar that's billed. And then I, it's too, it's too premature to do this, but how would we define success or non-success? Is, is success making a break even without the, the contract? Because going forward, there is no contract, right?
Correct.
So not asking somebody to come up with the answer right now. But we have to define success or failure going in at least a range of what's good. If it, the term is bomb, if it bombs, but what's the definition of a bomb? $100,000 below sea level or not?
I think it'll be several factors. If, if staff aren't using it, if the public utilization is down, success would be bringing in revenue. You know, perhaps a contract with another entity to cover part of the cost, savings on our health insurance. I don't think it's just one factor that would define success or failure.
And one of my definitions of success is usage by the public. Just, just to give a benefit to the county employees and their families, and perhaps city employees who would tag along and their families. That's not good enough for me.
Right. And if it is, say, you know, we get it up and running and we have four hours, eight hours a week that aren't being utilized by the entities that are contracted in the public for those specific services, then we could offer the quick care services to the public.
Yes.
Because, I mean, you saw the articles in the newspaper. It's just not our staff that are paying $600 for an urgent care visit when they could have went to a, a quick care for a strep test. It's the public too.
That's true.
So we would be totally overwhelmed if we opened it to the public. But if we had certain hours a week that we could, I, it would be utilized. We have calls, you know, wanting to know if we have a nurse practitioner or physician onsite because people can't afford to pay $600 for a strep test.
Right. And if that demand is there, there's some, there's got to be some professionals thinking right now, hey, you know, maybe we should start a quick care.
Maybe they are, I don't know.
That's right, we don't know.
There's a new one down on Edgewood, I've heard.
A quick care?
Um, it's a, sort of like that, yeah. They don't take insurance, you pay out of pocket. So it, it could be going on.
Management's changing so rapidly.
It is.
And you have your, your regular physician, you know, if you're sick and you want to get in, you know, they say, well, two weeks from now. Well, two weeks, you're either gonna be better or you're gonna be dead. Or so. So, I mean, this is just an option where, where, you know, if I can get a shot of antibiotics and.
We have the space, we have the rooms, we have the support staff, we have the electronic health record. We have to buy a few supplies that will be covered by this contract that we need to hire that person.
I would like to give you directions, so just see if we can find a nurse practitioner.
Yeah, so the more time we waste, yeah.
Thing is gonna hinge on that. And so we can say, oh yeah, let's, let's move ahead. If we, if we can't find a nurse practitioner, then it's, it's kind of a.
I agree. We did talk to our nurse practitioner in town about what the going rate for, you know, nurse practitioners are. And we built that into the contract. But right now, we can't find a nurse for the salary that we're willing to offer, so we're down a nurse. So, you know, I, I don't know if we will be able to find a nurse practitioner for that salary that's willing to commit to working for us for a year. But if you don't try, you'll never know.
I think you just gotta be ready too. If it doesn't work, then you cut the cord.
Yeah.
And I'm willing to do that. Throwing those numbers together after the first year may be a trick because you may be looking at a lot of numbers that you can be objective with. But I think there's other subjective things that we'll also have to deal with. And, you know, what, what do you call it, a success if we, the numbers grew and reduced our health insurance? You take it all into consideration, which one weighs more for, for each of us? I, I'd like the, the health of benefits for our employees. Or to be able to get in there quickly and get something done. It's frustrating to sit in these offices for extended amount of times when you aren't feeling well. So I think that's kind of the first thing. And then I think there's a benefit for us as well with the, keeping our health insurance costs down a little bit too. And like I said, they're willing to take it on. But I'd like to go ahead and move forward with it. If you want to look at some more numbers and massage them, I know you're big into the numbers, that's great. I'll let you play with those and, you know, see what maybe we need to do to make sure it's a success or to help it succeed.
The time is of the essence here, so we should, we should go ahead and work those numbers this week and be prepared, more prepared next Tuesday to say go, no go. And then see what's, what you're learning on an applicant or a successful contact with someone who's willing to do this and with the potential of it not being renewed a year later.
So we can go ahead and put the notice out there on LinkedIn, see if we get any applicants come back next week? Is that what your direction is?
I don't see any reason not to do that.
Okay. And I know you've had the spreadsheet for a few weeks. You know, that's your biggest concern, is the revenue projections being too aggressive?
Too optimistic.
Too optimistic, okay.
I, I, I don't know what, I don't know what the industry average is, but I know, I just don't think it can be that high. There's just too many, but that person probably has to do continuing education or something. Most, you know, most professions require you to just hang up your, your work and go, go learn again or relearn. None of that is built in here. That's, that's where I'm concerned.
We'll do a little bit more research on that.
And the, you know, the support staff, if the, these folks are, electronic records are. And, you know, the support staff, these folks are, electronic records are, you know, that's, that's, that's not where we, where we are today.
Right.
We live, so can you see somebody in, in 15 minutes and do the dictation that goes with it and all that kind of thing?
Yes. We see clients right now. I see an STD client. We do testing, we can do treatment, and I can see them in 30 minutes and get them back out the door.
But we built in four an hour, because not every visit's an STD visit. One could just be a strep throat test. That's more intensive. So, you know, we thought the person would average 15 minutes, but, you know, one, yeah, one could be five, one could be 30. An immunization is quick. You need a flu shot?
And get them in about 15.
Yeah, so it just depends on the visit.
I recently had two employees go to a quick care. They both left because they waited three hours and just wanted a strep test.
Yeah.
So this would be a benefit.
I don't know how I feel about, you said something about if, if our employee went to your shop, it's not time off for sick leave, but if they went.
We had, yeah, we had originally proposed that, just thinking that it might incentivize people to use it, and like I said, if they're short on leave, if I don't have any sick leave, I'm going to come to work sick. I'm going to work all day, and I'm going to go to urgent care after work.
And you're going to make everybody else sick.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But if I could hop over to the health department first thing and see what's going on, and they're like, oh, it's just a sinus infection, or you have COVID and you need to go home, I mean, that's very important, but, you know, that's up to you. That is your decision. I know that it costs some ruffles and some feathers.
You've already booked, you've already booked that person full-time, that, that employee, not, not the one that's looking for help. You've already booked them for, for an hour, 35 hours a week. Where's somebody going to be able to just run over there and get in line? Because you've already booked them full. So that's why I'm saying you can't book them full.
Well, yeah, I'm sure we'll have some wiggle room, we'll have some appointment times, but we definitely would want people to call ahead and be like, hey, you know, how's the schedule looking for today? Can I get in?
Right.
Yeah, you say come in in 45 minutes. Well, you know.
And that's where, you know, duty staff, if they come to work and they're like, me and I have a sore throat, they could call over and be like, hey, do you have any appointments today? And maybe we don't. Like I said, we're not replacing all of their healthcare services. It's another tool in the toolbox.
Okay, and I'm, I'm good with that. It's just that if you've already projected that person to be busy the whole day, and you're also saying, well, if somebody else can slip in there, that's, that, that goes like this, that doesn't go like that. That's why you've got to cut these numbers down of being 100% efficient all the time and still have walk-ins. You can't do that. You can't.
I see what you're saying, but we're, we're projecting that the person will be, see clients, you know, I said, I think I said 35 hours. Okay, maybe it's 32, you know, we, this was an estimate, a projection.
So your 32 or 35 hours would include walk-ins?
Exactly, exactly.
Was kind of looking at it. It's not a schedule of 32 or 35 hours that there, there may be some downtime, and then they can help in other areas and stuff.
Yeah, they can help one of the nurses with diabetes education. Like, there's, there's plenty of work to go around, especially when we're shorter nurses.
Do, do you have, do you have statistics on, on, on your collection rates now? I mean, does everybody pay all the time?
We pay at time of service, so they're, like, they pay before they're seen.
There's very, yeah. We don't bill out, and there's very few people that come in and can't pay anything. Now, if it's a VFC visit, the Vaccines for Children's Program, you know, we try to collect an administration fee, but the vaccines are free from the state. And if they absolutely cannot pay anything, we're going to give those kids those vaccines. But typically, we just pay, it's a very nominal administration fee for those vaccines. It's, they are free. So we don't have a huge outstanding balance. Dana would be able to tell you, because she's our biller, but.
No, I mean, we, I, I don't know the exact percentage, but it's, it's very high. I've worked in the medical industry for almost 30 years, and in the private sector versus what we do, our collection rate is actually probably higher, just because our prices are lower and the access is there. What we do bill insurance for immunization-wise, we have a very high collection rate. And then our out-of-pocket, honestly, with Medicaid expansion, we've been able to increase our billing and our revenue basis on those as well, so.
I think if you open up for sports physicals, too, you're going to be, you know, you've got that little window there where all the athletes got to get, I think that could keep you really, really busy.
And the biometrics, opening that up to the community as well. I mean, that's, we all go through biometrics here. We kind of take it for granted, because we could go to our doctor and get a referee with our insurance, but having that flexibility of us coming to you and doing those labs and, and getting that good baseline, people that don't have insurance don't have the ability to do that. I personally have a lot of work that I just ordered a few years ago to start some processes, and I priced it with our insurance, with our discount. It was going to cost me over $3,000 at a local facility. I had it in the health department for $318. I turned that claim into my insurance myself. They apply that to my deductible, so it saved me money and it saved my insurance money. And that's what we're looking at to provide to the community, too.
Is that enough direction, then? Kind of got a plan.
So we'll go ahead and.
Begin next week?
Put the position on LinkedIn, see if we get any applicants, and then I guess come back next week, give us a little bit more data.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Yeah, I'm good with that. I'm ready to kind of move forward with it. May not be able to find anybody, I think.
Yeah, and I would then.
Right.
Yeah, then. Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Let's try.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Firsty.
Breathe right through that. So do we have anything else to come before us, before we go into closed session?
I think so.
I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri. The commission will go into closed session to discuss the following. Communications between public body and its auditors under Section 610.021, subsection 17.